Welcome to the special meeting. A reminder on cell phones, right? Thank you, gentle Ben. So welcome, Maho Pak community, to our special meeting agenda, our special meeting for August 12th, 2021. Can I get a motion to open this meeting? Trustee McCracken, second please. Trustee Massafra, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. Okay. I see that we have a nice crowd, a passionate crowd in the back of the... Yeah, okay. Please join me, stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Always get crazy when we have people, passionate people in the room, so I apologize. So thank you very much. So what I'd like to do is, so I want to acknowledge the passionate group of people in the back of the room. This is a special meeting, so most of the time, well, actually, all the time, we don't usually have public, you know, at a special meeting or public comments or anything like that. With that said, what I would like to do is entertain a motion to move a public component up so the group can be heard in the back of the room, so I'd like to make that motion. So, trustee McCracken, can I get a second? Second, David and Lucy simultaneously, same time, I might add. All in favor?
Aye.
So obviously, what I'm gonna do, if it's okay, so what I'm gonna do is I'm gonna read a statement right now, okay? Obviously, we have a, we've got a little change going on up in Albany, so what I'd like to do right now is, because we had a couple of, we had an item on for tonight that we're gonna be discussing later, so. Persuading to the letter that went out from Mr. DiCarlo yesterday indicating guidance would be forthcoming, and SED guidance came out today, I would like to make a motion to table the discussion on guidance to allow for the superintendent and his team to ascertain this guidance and impact it have on our students, staff, and community. Lieutenant Governor stated that upon entering her office, she will be making a determination, obviously, within the next two weeks regarding masks. So just what, that's the position, that's the statement that we have for this evening, but what, again, what I'd like to do is open it up to the group in the public over there. I don't know if, I don't know if you have a specific person that's gonna speak for you, if you'd like to speak individually, so please, if you could limit it to three minutes, we have a very aggressive personnel agenda where we'll be hiring teachers and also approving coaches, so if you would come, if you could just stand up, just state your name and where you live and your question, please. Yeah, so can I get a motion first to table the guidance discussion, please? Thank you, Michael, second. Adam and gentlemen, all in favor? Okay. Here we go.
Well, I think that's kind of, I apologize.
No, 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 don't apologize.
Danielle Poljack, how are you all? Thank you for letting us actually speak and crash your party. I think what we all really were expecting and kind of hoping was a little bit of guidance. It is the middle of the month, a lot of us do have to make arrangements with our children too, just to see how to prepare them for September. And I know you guys can't talk about masks, that's totally fine, I get it. But know that everybody is different, everybody's household is different, everybody's been impacted differently, whether it was from the illness or impacting from just the environment of what's going on. We all have different age children, so I just want to let you guys know, it's not a one-size-fits-all. Things that happened in the last 18 months in my house might have been different than what happened in somebody else's house. Some people excelled, some people depressed, coming from somebody that their daughter started in kindergarten during this, and then had a first grader that had a lot of troubles. Now I have another kindergartner about to start, and the change in the schedule actually was heartbreaking for her. She was looking forward to starting school with her sister, going on the bus the first day, and then I had to explain. She's like, well, she's gonna be home one more day for the summer, so it was kind of hard to explain that. So I don't know where that came from, I just, last year was a different circumstance, so this year was a little different, and it was kind of done right at the end of the school year. So that was one thing. And the transparency, I know you guys are trying, I get it, there's a lot of moving parts, so we just, more surveys or just more openness would be appreciated. I'm just, I'm just, we're passionate, there's a group of families that we are banding together, and it's just because we get it, everybody's different, again, like I said, and we just want to be heard. So, thank you. That's it.
Well, I appreciate, I appreciate that I'm sweating for you, so.
I understand that, because...
So I appreciate, I appreciate the commentary, which I can tell you that, you know, this board and this administration is gonna do everything, you know, everything possible to keep kids in school and keep everybody safe. So please always, always keep that in your heart, that we're always gonna make, we're always gonna, you know, think about the family and the safety of everybody and our staff first.
Yes, we get that.
So I really appreciate you guys coming down, coming down tonight, and please know and have the trust that we'll, you know, that we'll be able to get through this, we're gonna get everybody back in safely, okay?
Yes, thank you, appreciate that, and it's just, again, I don't want to go back to it, because I know you can't talk about the masking. But that's also just a big part of it, and I watched a little bit of the spotlight, I didn't have time to watch the whole thing, and I know Mr. DiCarlo mentioned that if there were, like, all hypothetical at this point, if there was masks, then there was no need for quarantine, and I didn't know if that was vaccinated versus unvaccinated, like, there was a little unclear statement, so if you do say, okay, next month we gotta go back with masks, but if there was an exposure, there's no quarantine, so then school won't close and my kid won't have to be home for 10 more days. Because there was, again, I reiterate, last year was tough, it was really rough. So if masking and quarantine still apply, again, just food for God. Thank you, I'm sorry, now I'm really gone.
If I could respond to that quickly? So as I'm sure, as you can be aware, I agree with you, I don't want to do what I did last year. Okay, I agree. The problem is that there's so many, just like you're saying, families have different points of views and different circumstances. Well, the government's not helping us out.
Right.
Our state government's not helping us out, right? So what happens is that here we think there's gonna be a press release today, which there was, from the Commissioner Rosa, who basically took the CBC guidance and cut it down. But now, the next change is that Lieutenant Governor made a statement today stating that, as far as she's concerned, if you were to ask her, as of now, she's gonna mandate masks. So we now just have a conversation and put something out there, right? Then we got our changing, two weeks, here we go again. All I can really explain to you is the following, okay? I agree with the fact that there should be a mechanism and a trigger that lets us know when we start if we have to with masks, then what's the trigger that we can go to optional, right? I am, and I will tell you straight up, the district clerk was on a poll on Monday with Department of Health, right? I asked, I said, that's the problem, you have parents thinking, here we go again for the whole year, because it's gonna be the Delta variant, then it'll be another variant, and we're back to the same thing. I don't want that, but I'm not an epidemiologist, I'm not a doctor, right? We get advice from our physicians, we get advice from the CDC, we get advice from the American Pediatric Association, and that's one of the things, really, like, every parent has to have that conversation with their pediatrician, right? Regardless of what your stance, they are not that big, you have to say, listen, pediatrician, what do you think? You know my son and daughter, should they or should they not wear a mask? Because whether we like it or not, here's part of the quandary, the American Pediatric Association has said they should be masked now. So that's like the, but going back to what I'm saying, is I wanted to make you clearly understand that. There should be a trigger both ways, so let's say if, hypothetically, like I said, we have to start with masks. After a month or whatever, and every week, we should be updating you what our numbers are. Here's the problem in Putnam, right? We have 100,000 people, but our people don't stay at Putnam Hospital, they go to Danbury and they go to Vassar. So we really can't get a good number, number one. Number two, we shouldn't be penalized if there's an outbreak in Garrison or Putville, that's the whole county. I'm asking them, how can we look at our students and staff? Can we look at our ZIP code numbers, right? And can you help me ascertain what that number is? So I say to the parents, listen, we start off, but if we hit this number, it's back to optional. And God willing, like last fall, we can be optional for a couple of months. Then if it ticks back enough and you know what the number is, then we go, because there's gonna be this, I agree with you. All I can tell you is I hear you, I'm fighting hard. My conversation today with the Department of Health, with Shanna Segal, she's gonna have a meeting with myself, and I've mentioned this to all the superintendents at Putnam, to see what we can do to try to ascertain what that number is. Because that's only fair. I hear you, I get you, I want the kids to be in every day, right? I want five days a week, I don't want to have where, right now what they're saying, and things can change, this variant can change, right, we hear it's Europe and England, well, England right now supposedly is here and on their way down. So if you follow what's been said over the last 18 months, by the next two and a half weeks, we should be going. So to make a decision now, who knows, come September night, maybe, you know, it's a whole different discussion by then. But all I can say is I hear you, what you're talking about, I'm working hard to get that trigger, because I think if we can say to the public, this is the number, and you know it, and then it goes a long, long way. Like I said, we want to do all the same things for kids to have fun, we want to have field trips, we want to have extracurricular programs when we have to school, we want the PTOs to run it, but we may, I don't know, we may have to start it that way. Hopefully, you wouldn't have to start, but you're right, I hear you, I'm listening, I, you know, a lot of times what happens is I have to take the stance of protecting at all, right? And sometimes that's difficult, it really, really is, but I can tell you, I do hear you, and like I said, I'm fighting to get that so that you and everybody else has a clear understanding. So you're welcome, and I thank you, I get it.
Wait, can I say something?
Sure.
Mark Caden, I live in town, like, we all know this is a politicized issue, wearing masks for kids. In Florida, DeSantis said you cannot wear masks in school. In New York, it's gonna be masks, let's all, we all know what's gonna happen, you know what's gonna happen, we all know it. The truth of the matter is, masks don't work, they're not N95 masks, so they're useless. We all know that, there's many epidemiologists and virologists that say that, so this is a politicized issue. We as a small community, Mayapack, bind together and say, listen, don't mask our kids, it's not safe for kids, especially small kids, like, like we're talking about, kindergartners, first graders, second graders, and it's just not necessary. Now, if the teachers want to wear masks, let them wear masks, there's not gonna be a lot of infection from kids to the, well, maybe to the teachers, but the teachers to the kids, maybe, but it's not gonna be a lot, we know that.
So you bring up a great point.
It's all politicized stuff.
And here's the issue, right? If we were just dealing with the COVID variant that I played, just stay with me, I agree with you 100%, it wouldn't be an issue, right? Because at that time, all the data and everything showed it really was an adult virus, it wasn't affecting the kids, right? I think we can all say that. The curveball right now is this Delta variant, whether we like it or not, and it's, you know, it's different in different states or whatever, it is starting to impact kids, right? So what happens is this, if, at the end of the day, and ultimately, I have to be very honest with you, the board, based on getting all the information, the data, we see what the governor says, we'll gather all that, we'll have another meeting, it'll be presented, and then the board will decide what we should or shouldn't do, based on where we're at. But to your point, that's the difference, is the variant. If it were COVID, like you say, no question.
It doesn't matter, the variant, we know the variant is more contagious.
No question.
The variant is less deadly, we do know that as well.
To vaccinate.
However, right, but the point is that for children, I don't know what the number is, but I think it's under 400, no, any child that dies is horrendous, but my point is, it's, you're more likely to get hit by lightning, in all honesty.
I couldn't hear your last name, sir.
Oh, it's Caden, K-A-D-A-N.
Here's what winds up happening, right? So, and we do, just like you're saying, we know that, we understand that, so we have to, I have to, have conversations in week with our legal counsel, stay with me, our insurance companies, just like you would have to if you own a business, right?
That was my next point.
Right, I know, but so...
Because that's what we're worried about, we're worried about lawsuits.
I know, but you have to understand something, sir, we can't expose, stay with me, the district, because what you said, what happens if, if there are groups of people who are, and I'm not, and again, I understand the political aspect of what you said, please, I do understand that, but if these entities who are, right, wrong or indifferent, in charge of public health, make these recommendations, right? And the Board of Education decides not to go with those, you know, recommendations, our insurance company says you could be liable, because God forbid that one kid, stay with me.
I agree.
Does get severely ill or God forbid die, because you didn't go with those recommendations or you can open yourself up. That's really, sir, part of the dynamic, and that's why it's said it's different because of COVID-19.
That's my point, we want openness, tell the truth, I know that's the reason, you don't want to get sued, I get that. But the truth of the matter is, we're not masking kids because it's safety for kids, we're masking kids because we don't want to get sued. That's the truth, why we say that?
But I'm trying to be honest and transparent with you to explain what all the parameters have to be.
Right, but that's the point, and if it was true medical science, why would DeSantis put all that on his millions of people in Florida, you can't mask your kids? Because he knows scientifically it's unsafe, I mean, it's not necessary to mask kids, but politically here, it's more of a democratic state, so they're gonna mask our kids, there's no, we're gonna mask our kids, probably for the next five years.
So you're saying it's more important not to get sued than my kid to have anxiety about wearing masks?
Exactly. So there's always give and take, I get it, I'm not mad at you.
No, I know, sir, and I understand, and that's why I'm saying to you.
But we're living in backwards, dude, I'm living in backwards.
I'm fighting hard, because I think one of the ways to do that is to get that trigger, right? I'm working hard on that, that because if we can do that, that gives us that place that we can say, okay, if the numbers go down, we can do that, that's what I'm trying to do.
And I'll say this, and I'll keep my mouth shut, the point is, look, if we're gonna wear masks, because you're gonna say that, because that's what our governor's gonna say, now you got no choice but to say, you gotta wear masks. But the point is, you don't have to enforce, you just don't. I mean, I work, I'm a DA agent, I bust people selling drugs, I don't, I don't enforce marijuana law. You know it's a law, if I see a guy smoking a joint, I'm going, hey, you're under arrest, and it's not a big deal, it's a marijuana joint, I get that, but my point is, we have to have discretion, we don't use discretion, we're legalism, legal, it's legalism. You gotta wear your mask.
But executive law is law, we have to follow.
No, it's not, it's a mandate, it's not law, it's a mandate, there's a difference between mandate and law.
Again, I respect it, I got it.
So I got something.
I have a question.
Sure.
My name is Lisa Sabino, I actually emailed you today, but you probably didn't get the opportunity to respond yet. Hopefully, you will soon. I have three children in the school district, two in the high school and one in elementary school, he's seven. He's going into second grade, he'll be eight next month. I want to know if there's no masking option that's going to be offered to parents, whether we make the choice, why are we not being given the option of remote learning? You guys boast about, you know, no child left behind, if my son is so petrified to put a mask on his face to go to school, then where is my option? He's being left behind because he's not gonna be allowed the option of doing online schooling, because he's too afraid to come into school with a mask on. If he's forced to, he's gonna have major psychological problems, he's already building up anxiety about September and school starting. So I want to know why we won't be offered the option of remote learning like we were last year, if you're not going to offer mask options.
So every case is individual, and what will happen is that if you get a doctor's note for it, you fill it out, you have a conversation with our pediatrician, every case is individual, so I'm not gonna blanket every specific group, it's individual, so each individual, depending on what the circumstances, we would have to take a look at.
But if my son's allowed in school without a mask, then it's defeating the purpose of everybody that has to wear a mask, then, right? That's still optional, he could still be spreading the variant to everybody, like you just stated, and you could have a lawsuit on your hands because he didn't have a mask on. So my question is, going back to my question, why is remote learning not an option this year for parents that don't want to mask their children?
And I just, I'm sorry.
Yeah, but I think what Mr. DiCarlo said was that it's on a case-by-case basis, so that's, you know, that would be, that's a case-by-case basis, so what you do is you would follow the protocols that you just mentioned and outline, and then we'd go and meet and organize a...
It's gotta be a medical condition, it's a medical condition, yes, otherwise the expectations in kids at school, yes.
So, yes, are you finished?
Yes, I am, go ahead.
I want to echo, you know, all three comments that were made right here, and I think most parents feel the same way at this point. I think at the heart of the issue, oh, by the way, my name is James Carandell, I live in the district as well, also on the Texas Sessions Board, so I can appreciate the board, all right? And my comments are directed at the board more than anything else, because you guys are here to represent us. You're a stopgap, and this, what we feel more than anything else is that the choice has been ripped from us. Young kids, older kids, middle kids, everybody's developing anxiety issues over this stuff, for one reason or another. Braces, no braces, teeth, complexion, you name it, it's out there, okay? Now you have to get to the sciences, you say, Dr. DiCarlo. There isn't a clear message out there, okay? You listen to Fauci, he's all over the place, you listen to the CDC, they're all over the place. So let's take this under consideration ourselves here, let's be logical here, this has always been a logical community. We've always had people that kicked in here. Don't remove the choice from us, give parents the choice, that's the key, that's the crux of this more than anything else. As I walked in here, half of you guys were wearing the masks, half of you weren't. All of a sudden, the meeting started, boom, the mask went on. It's your choice. This Delta variant's sneaky, sometimes it comes at you, sometimes, you don't know where it's gonna come from, right? No, you have no idea, so fine, if you feel comfortable wearing a mask, wear the mask, but give parents the choice, don't rip it from us. That's what this community is about, and we do the same thing on the Sessions Board, on the tax side of things. When people have issues and they come to us, it's our job to help them, to really look at their case and help them. Do the same thing for us. Thank you. Thank you very much.
I have a question, doesn't pertain to masks, but back on July 7th, I sent an email to all the board members and Mr. DiCarlo, the only one that had the courtesy to answer me was Mr. McDonough, I don't know who you are. Mr. McDonough? He's not here? He was the only one that had the courtesy to answer me, and I waited till the 18th, and I reset the email to everyone. And the email was very, just a question I had, and when I didn't get answers, it kind of bothered me, because I don't know, you guys are ducking the question, and I'd like to read the email to you, it says, I've been a Mayapack resident for 21 years, currently have three children in the Mayapack school system. Do you, meaning you personally, support critical race theory, 1619 project, Black Lives Matter, or any of the white guilt policies or concepts that are going around these, that we're hearing all over the news? Is that something you personally believe in, and will it be taught here at the school? And I have not gotten an answer, I got an answer from Mr. McDonough, it was kind of ambiguous, and I told him it's an ambiguous answer, and he tried to re-answer me, and it was still a little ambiguous, so, but I haven't received any answers from any of you. I just want to know, would you answer me tonight? Are you for any of that stuff? Would you like to answer me tonight?
I'm for going into my, I didn't get your email, I'm going to my spam, I had a lot of stuff because of the...
Yeah, I'm going to it, was your name?
I'll go check into that, yeah.
It's Angelo Sabino. It was sent out on the 7th, and again on the 18th.
Sabino, no problem, we'll go back, we'll get your email, we'll answer your email, no problem.
Can you answer it now?
You wouldn't answer it tonight?
Yeah, you can answer it now, it's an easy question.
Either you're for it or you're not, and if you know it's gonna be taught here.
Well, as a citizen, none of us want it, I'm pretty confident of that. There isn't a person in town that, no matter what race they're from, because that only divides...
I will address it, I will address it.
And I know, because I work in a diverse, it's a work.
You know, it's, you know, it's an issue that there's a lot of misunderstanding and representation of it, what it is and isn't as far as what the school district is and isn't doing. We are not, or we would never, because I would be in this position, going to tell any child that they're racist because of this color they're scared of, that's not gonna happen, that's not gonna happen. If that was ever dictated to me to do it, then I'm out, that's not happening. However, however, we need to look at, like, and I think as a school district, we kind of a little bit were ahead of the curve a number of years ago, because if you remember, we were out of compliance with our middle school and high school hours, so we added a ninth period, and what we did is we added Mayapack Life and Middle School Success Program, where we started to talk about civics, we started to talk about responsibility and how you look at media, how you look at social media, how you navigate research, how you learn to other people's points of view, how you have to listen. That's some of the equity work that we've kind of started to do, or we want to continue to, just stay with me. We're not looking to get a canned, you know, program, we're not looking to do that, not at all. We're looking to make sure that everybody feels it's safe and equitable, reliable, compassionate.
Why do we, why do we fall for this equitable word, it's all of a sudden this equity, equity, equity?
Well, because, meaning that it's, meaning that when there's somebody else's point of view, that we just have to make sure we're all able to be heard, that's what we want.
But that's not, but that's not what's happening in our schools, there's an indoctrination in our schools, in our colleges, and I'm not saying in this school district, I'm not saying in this school district, but across America, it's happening, and I'm telling you, it's not helping anything, I'm in law enforcement, that's what I do, I've been doing it for 29 years, and I work with black people, Hispanic people, Asian people, white people, every, and I work in the DA, we're super diverse. And let me tell you, critical race theory is gonna do nothing but destroy this nation, it's all nonsense, it's crazy. So if we do any, any even inkling of talking about equity, we are destroying our children, literally destroying them.
Sir, what's your name again?
Angelo.
And your last name?
Sabino.
Angelo Sabino, okay, I always make a point, if I may, just for a second, I always make a point to answer every email that I see, so it probably went to spam, and sometimes it happens from external context to internal context, sometimes it blocks it, but I will tell you, I have been asked about the 1619 project before via email, and I've, and again, like Mr. Carlo said, it's a very complex issue, depending on where you read, what you read, same with critical race theory, which really...
It's not complex. 1619 is not complex, it's nonsense. It's nonsense, it's nonsense.
So the gentleman asks if anyone's willing to answer, and I'm more than happy to take a moment to answer, so...
I'm glad you do, I so love that.
Critical race theory is usually something that's taught at the college level, and not something that is adopted as truth, it is a theory, and that's what all theories are, so what I said was, the 1619 project, which has been debunked by many historians, and it is dangerous to teach history a certain way. History is written by the winners, and you can't teach one string of history. And the most important thing, and this is the beauty of America, is you should teach the goods and the bads, because the beautiful part about it is, we've overcome so much of the bad, and that's what makes our country so good. So I told the gentleman, it wasn't you, it must be someone else, that I don't believe in the 1619 project, and sticking to that strict teaching of it, because I think it's important for kids to grow up loving this country, because that's the most important part of this country, knowing that we have overcome so much, and we're trying to create a more perfect union to fix the things we haven't fixed. So that's to answer your question, and I'm more than happy to send you a more detailed response, so I just want to make that clear.
Hey, I do need to follow that up, I'm sorry. You're very incorrect in one point, when you say history is written by the winners, no. History is written by the people in power, always the people in power, and right now, the bureaucratic machine is in power, and that's what's writing history.
But in general, it's the winners, right?
What?
In general, that's the winners.
How the bureaucratic machine, the bureaucratic machine, that's also incorrect, because that's opening the door to Marxism and socialism. A system that has been debunked and over and over and over again, but yet it keeps coming back over and over and over again. Letting it in is a disaster, you know, the greatest mass murderers in history all started off with the right idea, you know, and you go through it, I mean, Mao Zedong, Stalin, through Lenin, I mean, obviously Hitler, you go through that, that, he's like fourth on the list, you know, Pol Pot is ahead of him, I mean, so when you go through it, and all of these guys started off with nice socialist theories, okay, and it ended up in fascism and death, all right? Now, are we getting there? No, we're starting, we're starting. That's all I have to say.
I just want to say something, sir, I just want to let you know that my belief is how children in school should learn, reading, writing, math, natural history.
Thank God, thank God, the politics should be left to college.
And also, just so you know, because you mentioned about representative government, this board and our policy has to... this board and our policy has to adopt all curriculum. So if we were to make any change in our curriculum, it has to go through you.
Fair enough.
Now I gotta tell you, I've been on this board, this is my sixth year, and I think our curriculum is the best curriculum in the damn area, and I'll go right out and say that. And do I, I don't see, I don't see any reason to change what we've done, we've got, we've got a great curriculum, we've got great administrators that to administer the curriculum, we've got great leadership, I don't see a damn, damn way that we're gonna change anything anytime soon. So I appreciate everybody coming here this evening. Thank you very much, thank you for your comments, they have fallen on deaf ears. Mr. Savino, I, I think Trustee Fafaro said that he did pull your, your email out of spam.
I'll, I'll reset the email.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I just wanna say quickly, it really wasn't like a special comment, but Ms. Masofra, I did email you also three times before the election of your seat, and I didn't, I never got a response from you either.
Okay, we sit in spam, but any outside emails that we get, go to spam.
Three times, Selene, S-E-L-E-N-E, Cosenza, C-O-S-E-N-Z-A.
Okay, we have to go with spam, because that happens, whenever we get outside people writing us, many times goes to spam. And the way we open dots, it doesn't automatically pop out to the end.
Yeah.
Outside powers.
Yeah. My, my email gets hacked all the time.
He gets hacked all the time.
I get hacked all the time, so I appreciate it.
We get messages from him telling us, oh, are you first tonight?